Good evening. Welcome to another edition of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission in the City of Carson. So happy to see everyone. I will begin with a roll call. Madam Secretary?
Madam Chair Thomas?
Here.
Vice Chair Diaz?
Here.
Commissioner Monteclado hasn't arrived. Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Infume?
Here.
Commissioner Guerra is excused. Commissioner Huff?
Present.
Commissioner Takedosso?
Present.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Next, we'll have our flag salute and we will be led by Commissioner Fred Docdossel.
Everybody, please rise. Put your hand above your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we have oral communications for matters not listed on the agenda the public may at this time address. The members of the Planning Commission on any matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No action may be taken on non-agendized items, except as authorized by law. Speakers are requested to limit their comments to no more than three minutes each speaking once. Madam Secretary, do we have any?
There are none, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Oral communications for non-public hearing items listed on the agenda, members of the public. The public may at this time address the members of the Planning Commission on any matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No action may be taken on non-agendized items, except as authorized by law. Speakers are requested to limit their comments to no more than three minutes each speaking once. Do we have any speakers, Madam Secretary?
There are none, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I am now looking for approval of the minutes from meeting held October 14th.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Roll call for the vote. I think it was Docdossso that made the motion and it was seconded by Infume. Are we voting electronically? Please cast your ballot. Okay. It has been approved. Do you have it? There we go.
Unanimous, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. We have, the next item on the agenda is for a public hearing. And we have a presentation that is going to be presented to us by Associate Planner Max Castillo. You have the floor, sir.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. The project for tonight is approval of a 51-unit condominium building per Section 9212.2 of the city's updated zoning ordinance. Multiple-family residential and residential condominium development is prohibited use in the DMX zone and is subject to zoning compliance determination. The project is located in the western part of the city with Carson Street to the north, 218th to the south, Manetta Avenue to the east, and Figueroa Street to the west. The plan, the project is compatible with the surrounding uses, which are commercial and residential, and includes a mobile home park to the north, a multi-unit office building to the east, a medical office to the west, and an apartment building and single-family homes to the south. The plan is consistent with the surrounding neighborhood character and will supply new housing to the city. The subject property site is in the downtown mixed-use district and has a general plan, land use designation of downtown mixed-use. The project site contains two existing parcels. Lot one being developed with the proposed condominium building and lot two occupied by the existing bank building. Now pursuant to a new ordinance, because the condominium project does not involve a division of land, the tender map will be approved administratively. The site plan depicts the existing proposed layout of the property. This plan also shows emergency access pathways. The development will have accessibility via Carson Street. The city's traffic engineer has reviewed and approved the project traffic analysis and project plans and has determined that adequate access and circulation will be provided. The LA County Fire Department has also reviewed the project and has determined that there will be adequate emergency access, subject to conditions of approval. The proposed development will include a total of 115 parking spaces and nine bicycle spaces, which meets parking requirements. The project does not include, excuse me, an active ground floor commercial use and is therefore required to provide a community development to qualify for a general plan exception. A general plan exception. To qualify for this exception, the project has included five affordable units that will be deed restricted, deed restricted, excuse me, for low-income households. This is a closer look to what the floor plan of the roof and second floor would look like. The left floor plan shows a proposed roof plan and the right plan shows the proposed second floor, sorry. Now, the second floor will consist of five one-bedroom and 12 two-bedroom units. Three of the five one-bedroom units on the second floor will be affordable. The third and fourth floors have the same residential mix with two affordable units being located on the third floor. The design is contemporary, consisting of stucco cement panels with a mix of contrasting colors and siding. A parking art wall will provide street-level frontage and is designed to enhance street-level aesthetics and screening and will consist of stucco metal artwork and siding. The proposed project is categorically exempt from the provisions of the California Environment Quality Act pursuant to Section 15332 infill development. Public notice and posting was also completed as required for this project. Staff therefore recommends that the Plan Commission adopt Resolution Number 25-2892 entitled "A Resolution of the Plan Commission of the City of Carson, Finding a SEQA Exemption and Conditionally Approving Site Plan and Design Overlay Review Number 00018-25 for a 51-unit condominium development at 438 West Carson Street." That concludes my staff report. I'm available for any questions and the applicant is here as well to answer any further questions.
Thank you. At this time, to my colleagues, are there any questions? Mr. Castillo? Yes, Commissioner Huff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was listening and I also read, this is 51 units that are coming in. And if I understand correctly, on the first level, they're going to be three bedrooms, affordable housing. And on the second level, doesn't matter which level, you have two bedrooms. Those are also, so all of the affordable housing are one-bedroom, and is that correct?
Correct.
Well, was there a reason that all of them are one-bedroom? There was no two-bedroom affordable housing out of all of that?
I was not given the reason. Perhaps the applicant can answer that.
I would just like to know if there was any thought given behind that? Why at least one couldn't have been a two-bedroom in that quantity? Is there, there's no one? Okay.
Well, when we have the applicant come up and if you want to ask them a question, you can pose that question to them.
Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Any other questions at this time of our Associate Planner? Thank you for the presentation. So we do have an opportunity for the applicant to speak. I have cards from Doug Moppen. So we'll call him first.
Good evening, Chair Thomas and-
Raise the mic up so you can-
Good evening.
There you go.
Yeah. Usually I'm pushing it down, but nice to be here tonight again for you and to present this building. We started this about middle of 2023 when we were exposed to this property and put it in escrow. And at the time, we were looking at building for-sale townhomes. But staff at that time indicated that the new downtown overlay zone was adopted and therefore we needed to go back to the drawing board and build and propose something that had a minimum of 40 units to the acre. So we instructed our consultants and architects and engineers to do so. And this is what we've come up with. And, you know, we believe it's a good-looking building. It fits the neighborhood well. It's set back from the street. We have a very attractive art wall going along Carson to buffer the view of the parking area from the public. And, you know, have fountains and planters and some nice-looking amenities. The building meets all the zoning codes for parking, open space height, guest parking. We have some nice amenities. There's a downstairs community room and there's a rooftop deck and that provides three outdoor kitchens and some barbecue spaces, some places to eat and enjoy the view from 45, 50 feet up there. And we hope you like it and we're here to answer any questions you have.
Okay, once again, I will ask Commissioner Huff. Now would be the time to pose your question.
Can you please just tell me the thinking behind? Well, why wasn't one of the affordable, at least one, a two-bedroom unit? Why are all of the affordable housing one-bedroom?
Well, the truthful answer is money. It's expensive to give away a two-bedroom, you know? It's very expensive to give away a one-bedroom, for that matter. We're talking about selling units 200, 250,000 below market value to provide affordable units. So it was a monetary consideration on our part.
To give them away. Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, the bigger the unit, the more they cost, so then they're no longer affordable.
It's true.
Any other questions? So I do remember you from before.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Busy, busy.
It's good to see you back again.
You too.
I do appreciate.
Oh, I appreciate your time.
I do appreciate, I do appreciate the fire zone, the emergency.
Yes.
Yeah.
We were just working on that today, hot and heavy with my partners and explaining it to our colleagues and builders and we've got it all lined up the way you like and so it should go well. I think it was good, too.
It was excellent.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, we've included that in this, by the way, because it's, if you're in a hurry to get out of there, you gotta have a place to go, right?
Absolutely. I appreciate, I appreciate all that you did to make that happen.
Helped us out with that tremendously and your advice was very well, very well used.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good to see you again.
You too.
I also have David Moppen?
Yeah. If you want.
Do you want? You're good? Okay.
Thank you. If you need me, I'll still, still here.
Thank you. Next speaker that we have is Carlos Gonzalez. You have three minutes, sir.
Hi, good evening to everyone. So basically, my concern is about the project that they just presented, gentlemen. My parents are, their home is right behind that project and they're a little bit concerned about the, basically, the privacy. We wanted to see if there's gonna be a wall there or is there gonna be, you know, direct windows gazing over the house that they own. It's on the southeast, I believe. If they're so kind.
So your parents are south of the-
Southeast.
The southeast of the project?
Yes, my parents' backyard is literally over where the, where they're gonna be building the condos. I mean, if you could put the aerial view, I can point it out. That's perfect. So if you could see on the southeast side, on the bottom right, right there, that's my parents' home. So it's, it's pretty, it's pretty vast area. It's about 10,000 square feet right there in the corner. Yes, sir, yes. So on that side, we were wondering if there's gonna be like a wall, you know, or is there gonna be windows to the apartments or the units there? Like facing towards my parents' house?
So do you want to address that?
Yeah, I'm trying to look at the site, but no. The windows are, it looks like almost 100 feet away.
But I think you're, what you're asking is that the, the complex itself, is there a wall between your parents' property and where the complex is being built? Is that what you're asking?
No, I mean, there is a wall currently there, but the wall is only six feet high.
Right.
So what I'm asking is, are there gonna be windows facing towards the property?
To the backyard of the property?
Correct. So basically, what I'm seeing is this side, if I may, sorry.
Yeah.
Excuse me. We have to have people at the microphone or we can't hear for the record.
I believe that there were, and I want you to complete your, your time. I don't want to take your time away.
Well, this gentleman just explained, I'm sorry, what was your name? Doug?
Doug, yes.
Yeah, Doug just explained to me, right there, there's gonna be parking structure. So there's not gonna be any, any issues with it.
Okay.
He just finished with that.
Awesome.
Thank you so much. Thank you guys so much for your time.
Thank you for coming. Go ahead, McKenna.
And if I can add, that was, that was, that was a point of our conversation because we did have concerns about the adjacent homes and wanted to make sure that there was, privacy was being addressed as well as the applicant doing-
Hang on just a second, I want to make sure Carlos is getting this.
Okay.
I'm calling you by your first name, that's all right, Mr. Gonzalez, but go ahead, repeat.
Mr. Gonzalez, I was explaining that that was a part of our conversations, recognizing the homes as at that corner of the, of the project. And the applicant was, understood that and made sure that there weren't any impacts from the building in that location as well as doing outreach to the community.
You're good? Thank you. Just received another card to speak on this item. Angelica? Surely you don't want me to read all of this because I would have a problem with that.
This is not on the item.
Huh? This is, this is not about this item?
It's not about this item, it's a general comment. Should I make that at the end?
Yeah, we, we had the, oral communication was before this, before this public hearing. So you kind of got here late for that. But this is a general comment that you want to make regarding?
It's just, I'm here with the Rivers and Mountains Conservancy. I just want to let the city know about funding opportunities along the LA River.
Oh, this is an announcement thing that you're trying to do? Okay, yeah, now would not be the time for that. Appreciate your coming. We do have accounts?
We could do it at the next meeting or we could read it into the record at the next-
Well, I was about to say, we can also, we have a council meeting that happens the first and third Tuesday of the month and if you're available, and then the Planning Commission meets on the third and, wait, second, third and fourth Tuesday. Second and fourth, you got it. Okay. But let us go through this, please, and then we, we don't want to break our old, what we have. Are there any other speakers for this public hearing? Madam Secretary?
There are none, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So at this time, we will close the public hearing and we will come back to our planning commissioners and ask if there are any questions, comments, before we move forward on this project.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Not, not a question, but I, I just want to acknowledge, as you yourself alluded to earlier, acknowledging the fact that both the applicant and the staff took the lessons that we've learned from previous meetings about developments. And in this specific instance, the fire lane, the emergency exits and all that have been addressed before bringing this to, to the commission. So thank you so much for doing that. Thank you to the staff for taking care of that as well. That completes me.
Thank you. If there are no further questions or comments, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Vice Chair Diaz?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve staff's recommendation of this project, as was presented this evening. And that, I believe the applicant would attest that he's in full agreement with the conditions of approval on this project, as was presented to us this evening. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I second that.
Motion was moved by Vice Chair Diaz, seconded by Commissioner Docdossso. Please call for the vote. There we go.
Motion carries?
Thank you. So the project has been approved. I can't wait to see what it looks like. If it looks as, as good as the rendering, I think we'll be quite happy and all is well. Thank you. Thank you for coming, those of you who came regarding this item. I want to also thank you because I understand that there were a few community meetings that you had. So thank you for that, too. Take care. It's good to see you again. Yes. Okay. And, and just, again, I just don't want to go away without addressing Angelica. So I will allow you to come forward. So wait till the mic is on.
Thank you.
There you go.
So good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name's Angelica and I'm here on behalf of the Sangue Rojor LA Rivers Mountain Conservancy, also known as the RMC. I'm here to share information about Campaign Para Todos. It's focused on uplifting the southeast LA communities, specifically Carson as well. And it's, so as you know, with many upcoming planning and development decisions in this region, whether related to open space, transportation, housing, or climate resilience, they intersect with the LA River and we're working to ensure that residents and community-based organizations, city leaders, are supported in pursuing the river-adjacent improvements. So, such as like shared multi-benefit corridors, green infrastructure to reduce flooding and improve air quality, safe access to parks, habitat, and recreation space. We also want to highlight that there are state funding opportunities available right now through the agency like RMC for, to help cities like Carson advance projects. And I just wanted to introduce myself, bring this to, to you. And as you continue to evaluate future, future development along the river and throughout the city, we would welcome the opportunity to meet with you, partner, share resources, and provide letters of support or anything we can do to help. And I'm sorry, I have come several times to try to be at the meetings and have gotten canceled. So may I leave my card?
Yes, please, would you give your card to our secretary?
Thank you so much.
Thank you for continuing to be persistent
Yes.
until this finally happened. So thank you for coming. We appreciate it. All right. Next on the agenda will be the manager's report.
Well, good evening, Honorable Chair and distinguished planning commissioners. My name is Nathan Freeman. I am your day-two Community and Economic Development Director. I'm looking forward to working with you in the future. Given that it is day two for me, I'm going to pass the baton to my colleague McKenna, who's gonna give you the update. Before I do, I would like to acknowledge the staff who did an incredible amount of work to prepare the agenda and the report for you this evening. Our job as staff is always to give you good information so that you can make informed decisions for this community. That's always our goal and our objective. So thank you for your service to our community. I'm looking forward to working with you. And with that, I'll pass it to my colleague for the update.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Freeman. Again, it's, it's really great to see you this evening, Chair Thomas and our honorable commission, McKenna Alexander. Very brief reminder that as of now, until we hear otherwise, we will be, you will access your turn, the baton is yours. November 5th will be your opportunity to present the update to the, to the council. If there's any changes, we will let you know. But as of now, you're scheduled to provide the annual project update to the city council on their meeting on November 5th. And? What's that? It could, I mean, yeah, so when we do provide you the information, we'll add another, another project. So it could, it'll end up being, it's still October, it'll be 19 projects instead of 18. We'll increase it by one. And instead of presenting the wonderful 20-minute video, we are tasked with providing a highlight. So we're going to have a five-minute reel of what was presented to you during our, our last meeting. And that concludes my comment.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. So, and in case anyone was a little, we have the election happening on the 4th, which throws the council meeting to the 5th. So if you look at your calendar and you say, wait a minute, that's not Tuesday, that's why. So make sure you mark your calendars for those of you who are available. Usually, we're here by 6 o'clock when they start doing the presentations for the city council. And our video will be shown at that time, hopefully. If there are any changes, we will be notified. If there are any changes, we will be notified. Thank you so much. The staff has done a wonderful job. But before I get into that, we're gonna go into oral communications by the commissioners and we will start to my left, Commissioner Wilson.
My only comment is go Dodgers. Complete, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Doc Dossel.
On that note, between my first name and our, our new director's last name, that goes in line, right? But I welcome to Carson. And it's, it's always nice to have these efficient meetings. And I, I do mean what I said earlier that, you know, we're continuing to learn based on previous, you know, meetings. So that's absolutely a good thing in terms of growth, right? But I did unfortunately miss the big city celebration when we unveiled our new, you know, our, our amphitheater. But I had the opportunity to, to be a part of the first event that was held at this location, which was this past weekend's Philippine American History Month Celebration slash Larry Itliang Day. So I got an opportunity to experience it firsthand and it's a beautiful facility. So definitely in line with, you know, us moving the city forward. That was something that, you know, that came through this commission in the past. So it's nice to see these developments come to fruition for the next generation to see. So that completes me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Huff.
My, thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to just say ditto to the comments that were made before me. I too missed the big event, although I knew it was coming. And now that this date is on the fifth, it's gonna be hard to be there. I'm trying to plan everything during the week and everything changes before me. But I will try to do my best to be there for our presentation at the city council. And I just want to congratulate all of my colleagues on the fine work that we're doing and to thank the four of you that were there for the big event and representing us all. We will do our best, I will, to be there to the next one. I'll do my best for the fifth. Thank you so much, staff, for everything that you do. And welcome, Mr. Freeman. That completes me.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson.
Happy to be here, happy to serve. Welcome, Mr. Freeman.
Commissioner Mfo-Me.
Hi, too. I'm happy to be here. Welcome, Mr. Freeman. And just wanted to say I was, I was very impressed by the amphitheater. Very proud to be a, a member, a citizen here and to live in the city of Carson for almost thirty years. And I see it's just developing and growing and it's it's beautiful. And it's come a long way in a short period of time. And I just want to thank our, the, the city staff, the managers. I was surprised to hear that our Dr. Robert Lennox, the Assistant City Manager, he had a lot of input on this project. We sat with him several, you know, at our meetings and we just sometimes don't know who we're working with. But these people are so talented. So I was really impressed with that. I'm gonna try to be here on the fifth. Anyway, thanks, everyone, and I am complete.
Thank you, Vice Chair Diaz.
I do not have a report this evening, but I also welcome Director Freeman and staff as usual. Thank you for the projects that you bring before us that, again, you know, are complete and give us all the information that we need to make sound and wise decisions for the betterment of the city, for the community at large, for our businesses and our residents. Thank you. I'm complete.
Thank you. And I'll just say, we have filled a spot that we needed to have filled and we're very excited to welcome Nathan Freeman to that seat. He brings a lot of expertise and energy and ideas and all of the things that we need to move forward. I know some of you, having had conversation with some of my colleagues, were a little bit concerned from time to time at the lack of meetings that we were having. But there, over the past few months, there have been a lot of things going on, whether they were on a personal level, business level, happening in the city. The work was still getting done and it was moving forward. And so the staff is to be commended for that. Every staff that works throughout the entire city. And I'm warning you, as has been put out, we are about to get busy again. So be ready. Have your calendars ready. Yeah, we're back on the move and we've been there before. We know what that's like. We've had multiple projects to have to review, to make decisions on. And that video that will be shown on the fifth, which we've had an opportunity to preview, is just a small testament of all of the work that we've done in the past. So the staff is to be commended, the commissioners are to be commended. I am always excited for all of the changes, all of the growth, all of the things that are going on. And so we put in a lot of time and, you know, it's okay to stop every once in a while and say thank you. So with that, we're ready to rock and roll. That's all I can say. And I will adjourn this meeting at this time. Good, I know. Can we find out?